Good evening. It's 5:30. It's time for the city commission meeting to come into session. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republi-- for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all that ventured out tonight in this cold icy weather, hoping for better weather down the road, maybe spring. All right, gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Koflish, do you have any additions or any changes that you would like to make?
I have none.
I have no modifications either.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation. We're going to recognize the recognition of Director of Utilities Terry Liebarger, who is retiring after over forty years of service to the City of Independence. And I've got a little bio here I'm going to read concerning Terry's service. Terry began working for the city in 1980 at the PSW-1 in the street department. He transferred to wastewater treatment as a maintenance mechanic and relief operator in 1984, serving in that position until 1995. He was then promoted to water sewer department foreman. He served in that position until 1999, when he was promoted to interim public works director, serving in that position until 2000. He was then promoted to assistant utilities director, serving in that position until 2006, when he was promoted to utilities director, where he has served since. Terry, on behalf of the commissioners and all the city staff and the community of Independence, I would like to thank you for your over forty years of service to the community, and I wish you a happy retirement, and don't forget us. Don't be surprised if you get called down the road with a question or two, but don't be a stranger. But on behalf of everyone, thank you very much for your dedication to the City of Independence, and it's a retirement well deserved. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you for my made to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd like to say thank you to the community and everybody that's I've worked with because it's been an honor serving the community, and I will continue to, any way I can, to make Independence a better place to live. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, next on the list, we have the consent agenda. Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Koflish, do you have any comments to make concerning that?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, three zero. All right, moving along. Items four, items for commission action. Item A, consider awarding demolition bids for 414 South Wald Avenue and 416 South Eighteenth Street. David?
Mayor, these are two houses that have been condemned as dangerous and unsafe, and we only did receive one bid, and in fact, the other bidder told me today he's been tied up in Dodge City and unable just to bid on it, so we would therefore recommend the one bidder at the price that was listed, sir, of, I don't have that in front of me.
For $7,650 for JRV Industries?
Yes.
Okay, and they've been doing a lot of the demolition here lately of houses?
Yes.
I noticed they were working on the north 12, 1219 North Ninth?
Correct.
That one? Okay. All right, and they seem to be doing a good job meeting all the requirements of the contract.
Doing a good job, and they're meeting all the requirements and cleaning the lots and following all the requirements set forth by the city.
Great, and they seem to be doing it at a reasonable price, so that's, that's a plus for us.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Koflish, do you have any questions concerning this?
I have none.
When you look at the individual bids, are they, for the houses, are they falling in line with where the past bids have come?
Yes.
So we're comfortable that it was accurate?
Yes, yep.
Good, okay. I have no other questions.
Do I have a motion?
I move to award the removal of 414 South Wald Avenue and 416 South Eighteenth Street to JRV Industries in the amount of $7,650 for both properties.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item B, consider authorizing the city manager to sign an engagement letter with Tanner LLC to create and analyze the results of a citizen satisfaction survey. Kelly?
Mayor and commissioners, as you know, with the strategic plan, we, this was one of the intention statements. It also was, when the strategic plan was done, an initial community citizen survey was done, and this is kind of a midpoint, trying to follow up and hear from the citizens and get some feedback on that, and so this is all related to that and our efforts to increase our communications.
If I understand right, this will be done on social media and also by mail, is that correct?
Well, we will, there'll be a link that they can go to and fill it out online, and then we'll also mail out some paper copies, because not everybody has access to that.
Sure.
And I believe in the original strategic plan, we had around 500 respond, which is really good, so hopefully we can get that many people engaged this time.
So how many of these surveys are we planning to mail out?
Well, it depends. If we mail them out to all the utility customers, you're talking a little over 4,000.
So it'll just be, maybe those will be picked at random as far as mailing, and then everyone else hopefully would be able to clink on social media?
Yeah, I'll visit with Mackey to see how best to do that, and then also if people want to pick up a paper copy, I mean, we'll, usually had them, we had them at the library and different places they could pick up, but of course, we weren't in a pandemic then either, so it's a little bit different, but we may be able to just do them as an insert in the water billing, too.
Okay, that was, that was going to be my next question.
Because those are going out as well, so then you're just paying for printing and inserting.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Hayes or Commissioner Koflish, any questions for Kelly concerning this?
No, I don't have a question for Kelly, but I do think that this is an important engagement vehicle for us. It's important that the city reach out and do these types of things periodically as an effort to be in touch with and in tune with the citizens of Independence. So I encourage the, moving forward on this.
I think with staying with Tanner, it'll give us continuity to collect and analyze data, so it'll be much more relevant for us, working with the same consultant than switching to a different consultant at this time. It'd be, we risk getting some confusion or not being able to work in a straight line on where we're, where we began to where we're going.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm glad they were able to accommodate.
Yes.
And were interested.
All right, if there's no further input on this, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign a, an engagement letter with Tanner LLC to create and analyze the results of a citizen satisfaction survey.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, three zero. Item C, consider authorizing Trans Systems to prepare and submit KDOT City Connecting Link Improvement Program, CCLIP, grant applications for two projects. One, pavement restoration, Penn Avenue, US 75, from Morningside Drive to North City Limits, and number two, surface preservation, Chestnut Avenue, US 75, from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Previously, Trans Systems had created grant applications for these projects, and so in order to submit them for the CCLIP proj, or the CCLIP grants, the commission would just have to approve them submitting the grants, so the work has already been done.
All right, I understand that these projects are slated to be started in 2023? I believe that's right.
I would have to check the grant funding, but that sounds correct.
Okay, okay, and, and I did notice in reading in the description that they are planning to extend the width of the road by two feet?
Yes, that'd be, yes, an overall two feet, and that's on the, the northern portion between Morningside and the city limits.
Okay, great, okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions that you would like to bring forth?
No, I think this was submitted what a year or two ago and was
A year ago.
Denied funding, so I think it's good to continue on and resubmit it and see how, how we can do. KDOT's been very, very good to Independence with grants, and it's a good program and definitely needed work, and so I'm glad we're resubmitting and didn't just file it, so, thanks.
Commissioner Hayes, do you have some input?
No, indeed, I, I agree that we need to resubmit the, the grant application. The need still persists, so please, I support this resubmission.
All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion. There's, there's two, there'll be two listed here.
First, I move to authorize Trans Systems to prepare an application for KDOT's CLIP pavement restoration program for Penn Avenue, US 75, from Morningside Drive to North City Limits, and for staff to submit the application to KDOT.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And do I have a motion for item number two?
I move to authorize Trans Systems to prepare an application for KDOT's CLIP surface preservation program for Chestnut Avenue, US 75, from near Penn Avenue to Ninth Street, and for staff to submit the application to KDOT.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item D, consider setting a special commission meeting on February 17, 2021, at 9:00 AM to discuss city facilities.
Mayor and commissioners, we thought it would be best to set this as a special meeting so that you could have some discussion to discuss Commissioner Hayes's suggestions on some alternatives, and also to review a draft that we're working on for the marketing of Building D. And then hopefully by then, I may have some more updates on Phase One City Hall, on where they're at with the window replacement.
All right.
That's Wednesday, isn't it?
Yes, third Wednesday at 9:00 AM. It was, it was already set in your calendar, but this designates the, the purpose for the meeting.
I, I think it's a good idea to sit down and discuss city facilities, and need to hear what's on, on each of the commissioners' minds, so any further comments concerning this?
No, I'm available.
All right, then, do I have a motion?
I move to set a special commission meeting on February 17, 2021, at 9:00 AM to discuss city facilities.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item five, discussion, discussion related to use of public property and right-of-way policy, including consumption of alcohol.
Mayor?
Yes, David?
You guys, the commissioner previously asked for us to put a policy together, and working with the city attorney and everybody, it has also came up in the past about alcohol consumption, so we wanted to have a discussion with you as we're putting this policy together, and Jeff may have some more to add, if there's interest in any of that or exactly where you're wanting to go. We do have a, a policy drafted to show you, but if, if there is interest in creating the alcohol consumption, then we need to discuss that, to include that, and Jeff, do you have any thing further to add on that?
Yes, sir. We currently have two city ordinances that I think are attached in your packet. One of them just states it's unlawful to drink or consume alcohol on any public right-of-way. There are some exceptions carved out for some of the buildings, but there's yet another ordinance that talks about the, really the, kind of the downtown area for on-premises consumption, if you're within like 500 feet of a school, 300 feet of a church, or get this, 150 feet of another place that sells alcohol, and maybe it's time to look at those. Obviously, we've had requests in the past from the Independence Brew Works. They have a outdoor patio on the west side that is adjacent, partly, it's partly in the right-of-way, I think, but it's also adjacent to the right-of-way, and there have been requests, they would like to know how they could get a permit to have an event and serve alcohol in that area, and right now, there's no way they can, it's against city ordinance. So the discussion tonight would be whether or not you want to set guidelines to allow such an event to move forward, what would those guidelines be, obviously insurance requirements, some type of barrier or roping to keep the people consuming alcohol from wandering out in the street, you know, just a lot of safety things. We have a park policy that's fairly detailed that allows, like they had Oktoberfest there, so we have in place some things, but they just don't apply to the right-of-way. They could, we could adapt and things like that, but, and also a discussion would be, when they get a, make application, they get a permit, is it for one day, two days? What's, what would be the maximum period of time for a permit to extend? So, that's all I.
There were a lot of variables in that, they would have to carry, was it a $1 million liability bond? Would that be right, Jeff?
I don't have a copy of the park policy with me there. There is an insurance requirement on the park policy. What that dollar amount is, I honestly don't remember.
Okay.
I think Kelly, in her staff recommendation, said she talked to EMC, they recommend requiring a special event policy be issued to the applicant for whatever dollar amount you think's appropriate. You know, a million dollars 20 years ago sounded like a lot of money, a million dollars today is, it's still a lot of money, but
Yeah, but.
It's, you see lawsuits in that range very often, on Independence necessarily, but yeah, that's an important requirement. Thing Niwala, when they do theirs, they don't have alcohol, but they're required to get insurance, special event insurance, name the city's a additional insurer. This would be a lot smaller scale, but since alcohol's involved,
Yeah.
It's probably a wise thing to require.
EMC said if no alcohol was involved, and it was simply what the brewery was doing right now, that event would not require insurance, but any event that has like rides or different activities, they request that we make them get insurance coverage for our protection.
Maybe we, we should talk tonight maybe as different steps, the basic right-of-way request, then look at alcohol as a separate item, then, you know, if there's something else leading to that, maybe we'd be more productive and, and, because it seems like some will apply and some won't apply, and some will, both will apply, but, you know, from what I, I see in your, your draft of the right-of-way application, you've got a lot of things covered, that it's starting to bring continuity to the event. The, the thing I was wondering about gray water containment, is that controlled with other codes, or is that something that?
That is controlled with our utility codes, but it definitely is probably something we need to include, and honestly, I didn't even think about that, but, you know, it's definitely a concern, and if the state comes down, like during Niwala events, and they catch it,
Yeah.
We do.
You might cover grease disposal, too,
Yeah.
Because I know that's always an issue with food vendors.
Yeah, that can create a lot of issues for our sanitary sewer and storm water to get full of grease, too.
Even though it's a small event, it could lead
Yes.
To more trouble, and
Yep.
On the electric, if they, do we need to cover anything if they're receiving power from an existing service, like from the building? What about ground fault protection or anything in the, in their, their connection to protect the public?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, would be very good.
But, you know, I really like, you've put a lot of time into considering in the draft, and it, it is good to see the acknowledgement, I think you had of the, the vendor, also making an acknowledgement that they're aware of these, too.
Yep.
So.
Chris, there's one thing I'd like to address if you think it's appropriate. On the one ordinance that has the distance restrictions, there's a provision that somebody can make application for and receive a waiver of the distance from the city commission. So if we set up a process for temporary permits for events, special events in the right-of-way, and let's say alcohol's involved,
Do you want, do you want the, the distance waiver procedure?
I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm having a little trouble hearing you right now. Okay.
It was Lacy, is her kid?
Oh, okay.
I muted her.
My question is, do you want the, the distance waiver issue to come to the commission every time there's an application, or do you want to set enough guidelines and just leave that up to city staff? That would be something for you to decide.
Could we take the, the downtown map with the surrounding residential areas, and could you overlay to show us how that distance affects the downtown area, and then maybe we could see which businesses would be affected, because if we know it's there, let's address it now and either make the exception or change it to look at the potential locations for it, so that we can solve what you're talking about initially, Jeff, of not always coming back, and we can have consistency in the ordinance, and, you know, if we need to change that distance, but, you know, I, I think we'll see right off, there could be a couple locations that would be in a conflict with the 200 feet from the residential area, so if we could address those now, it would make it easier for the owner and also city staff, and we can all come on board with it in the beginning.
You might want to also look at setting boundaries if you're looking at the downtown. You've already got the historical district and fire limit boundaries, which are established and are the same, which would be easy to interpret.
Well, I mean, the special event permit isn't limited to downtown, to be honest.
Right.
And the right-ofways, the city's right-ofways, all over town. Let's say Jeff Chubb wants to have a block party and have a cake of beer in the right-of-way. Do you want to encompass something like that or not, you know?
I think what I see mainly is the central business district. That would be a more significant impact.
You want to limit it to the central business district?
I think what we're looking at allowing an ordinance, you know, to try and, actually to try and enforce that into the residential area, consumption in a city right-of-way, if somebody's front yard, that's probably not practical.
Cake party at Leonard's house tonight.
In the back. I, I think that's a good point, because we sure don't want to be over, overreaching on this.
So I like that idea, Commissioner Koflish, as far as limiting that to the central business district and approach that, and I would like, I like the idea of, of, of being specific enough to where it covers a good range of questions that would come to where city staff would have direction and be able to, to carry out that without having this, another issue coming before the commission again, that it would be specific enough that City Hall could run with it, and we would not have to be involved, so that, that's also a good plus, I like that. And as far as utilities, anytime we've set, I know, working for the electric, we'd all, they'd always set a temporary pole with ground fault indicator breakers on it, so that was just standard, and that would be something that they could comply with relatively easy, that would pass an inspection because it would be firmly secured, and it would have the right amount of outlets for, for protection, so.
Worst-case scenario is running an extension cord from a building to a trailer, and either the cord is in poor condition, or traffic, or
Right.
It gets flawed and somebody gets electrocuted
Yep.
Walking across it, or a trip hazard. Will there, are there any problems with cookers or something that needs to be brought out?
I think Kelly kind of brought up, the biggest concern we have is the grease and
Frying.
Frying and
Disposal.
Disposal, or sometimes we see this happen, they just leave their five-gallon bucket, sit there and go.
Or they spill it and it makes a mess.
Yeah, so that grease would be our biggest concern.
Yeah.
On the events that have happened out there now, as far as these food trucks and these, this barbecue unit out there, has that worked pretty well? I mean, there's not been very limited issues with that?
Our only issues we've had at the brewery is just getting it, understanding of where they were to be set up at, and once they got over on the right-of-way and everything has went well, I mean, they do a very good job of cleaning and making sure everybody was just, we had a few times there, they were blocking the whole street or on the other side of the street. Once we got all that straightened out, and now they understand exactly where they're to be at, we haven't had any problems.
Good.
Or any complaints that I'm aware of.
Good, that's a good tool for them to bring food in, because from what I understand, the first time they did it, they
Yes.
Really increased their business substantially, and I believe the people that were making the food pretty much sold out of everything that they had brought, so
Right.
It was, it was good for both the brewery and for the people that were selling food, so, and I like the idea of that, being able to continue down the road. It's just another way to bring people to an area and to increase sales for the brewery and
Yeah.
And help out a local vendor also.
It just brings the question, kind of like what Jeff said, if there was a way for them to set up, because right now, if they want to drink, they have to get their food and they go back inside.
Right.
If the commission was interested in that, then.
I think we, we need to explore and be open to what would be workable for them.
Well, indeed, and I just want to reinforce that events of this nature are very, draw a lot of outside attention,
Yes.
Attention from beyond the city limits of Independence, Kansas. Independence Kansas, and that brings people to town. And so not just here at the brewery, but, but throughout Independence, special events of this nature. We mentioned the Oktoberfest, which was a very large event in its time.
Yes.
And so those types of activities that bring people to town, increase our economic activity and are beneficial and introduce people to, uh, the amenities of the town. So it's, uh, it's worthy to be open to this type of activity, but it's also worthy to understand, um, uh, the nature of, uh, the obligation, uh, and the responsibilities associated with using, uh, the right of way and, and public property in this way. So, uh, just clarifying this in an ordinance or procedures of this nature is very apropos. So I, I encourage us to continue this conversation.
Do you think with the parking lot on, uh, say Chestnut and Eighth Street where we did have the power pole put in? Do you think there would be in the future, somebody wanting to schedule an event to utilize the parking lot that maybe we should consider how that would be handled in a request for if this permit would apply, but also then the consumption of alcohol in that area?
I think so. I see Lisa Wilson here, I don't know, would you be willing to come up here and put some, I mean, I think it would, that is, I mean, they see expansion of their, uh, farmer's market, they're doing different events in the evening. Uh, I've heard them discuss about, uh, making that, having the street department remove some s- stumps and making the grassy area more usable. So I, I agree, Commissioner, that I think that is a space that could become a vital part of downtown and for different events. You have that space, you have the, uh, pavilion that they're developing downtown. I mean, I know the, the different groups are working very hard to, uh, vitalize our downtown. And there's several pers- prospective businesses that are looking downtown and, uh, opening up different shops. So, I mean, there's a lot of activity happening downtown right now.
I have a, um, a question, um, over at, uh, Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, Kansas with Pitt State, with all the events they have, they have the, the tailgates at football games, they have various breweries and bars and clubs in, in that area and they're a big college town, probably six or seven thousand students. I'm just curious how they handle, um, their events concerning right of way, what the right of way policy is, what their, uh, policy is toward consumption of alcohol. I just wonder how they've regulated that and if maybe that's something we could look at to see, um, if they've already come up with a policy that works for them, um, I don't have a problem in taking someone's idea and.
Oh, yeah.
And, and using it here, but maybe that's something we might want to look at, being they're a close neighbor. See how they operate and learn from.
I would definitely ask for Chief Harrison, he's not here tonight, but his input and their recommendations and having him reach out to Pittsburgh and, uh, to their chief and how they, I think that's a very good idea, Mayor.
See if they've ever, if they've had any issues with the policy and.
Yeah.
And what issues they were and what they did to correct those and.
Right.
And if it's a working policy for them, then that's maybe something that, that we can adopt and that'll save us from doing a lot of more, a lot more groundwork.
Exactly.
If something already exists that we can adapt to.
Yeah, we definitely can get that for you.
Okay. Gentlemen, any, any other comments?
So would you like us, I mean, these things here, I know Jeff's going to be gone for a few weeks, but we'll get with Chief Harrison and kind of bring back another round add, adding these things in. I can, Kelly and I can visit with some of the groups.
Well, unless Jeff being gone, it'll probably be, bring it back in March.
March.
If that works.
When Jeff gets back and we'll put it back, bring you another draft.
That would be fine. That would provide us with some more information and that we could consider. You know, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I think the planning is critical, like Commissioner Hayes said, we got the opportunity to consider, would make it all inclusive.
Yeah.
It is a, an effective tool.
Yeah.
To bring people in and we can accommodate, um, avoid problems.
Right.
Before they become a problem.
And we can reach out to the other organizations that may have some input of activities or planning that we may not be, even be thinking of.
All right, thank you staff. All right, moving along, item six, reports. Uh, gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the fourth quarter treasury report?
Yes.
And are there any, are you good with it? Do you have any questions concerning that? I had a couple, mine, mine were answered earlier, so I'm, I'm good, but.
I got the, uh, the second report late, I haven't had a chance to look through it. I'll look at it and get back with you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Lacy had some explanation in the email, which I liked her direction, so, with her explanation of it, so we'll, I'll get back with you.
Okay.
Commissioner Hayes, you're good?
I have reviewed it, I have no questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Uh, we've had a chance to look at the January sales tax report and there, where is that at? Right there in front of me, okay. And this would be, um, this would be from November's.
Yes.
Okay, from November of 2020, November's sales. And we have a drop of. 3.4, I was trying to pick it up here with these glasses, am I? Okay, I see it now. Okay, so, uh, it'd be interesting to see what, um, next month looks like, which will be, uh, the ending month, December of 2020, so, and see how that goes. We, we had a good year last year, considering we were in, in the height of a pandemic, so hopefully the trend will, uh, continue, we'll be able to hold our own and, uh, have another good year sales tax wise, so. Gentlemen, any, any questions concerning the sales tax report?
I'm good.
I'm good also.
All right, moving into B, airport five-year CIP. John, how are you?
Doing well. Good evening. Uh, there are three near-term projects, uh, that are slated to either begin very shortly. Uh, the first two, reconstructing the south apron ramp and also remarking the runway. The first, we expect to give the notice to proceed to the contractor in March. The second, we expect to give a notice to proceed in April or May to the contractor. So both of those projects are well underway and have already been obviously bid and awarded. We have completed engineering on and are in the pre-bid phase on the taxiway B demo, which I believe has been previously presented to the commission and the airport, uh, parking apron rehab, and we expect to bid, bid those in March or April. Um, the next projects are in 2023, 2024 and, uh, 2026, and those are federal fiscal years, so some of it may spill into 2022, for example, like engineering. That seal coating and remarking the runways in 2023, uh, rehabbing the south portion of the taxway in 2024 and in 2026, looking at guidance signs, so. Those are the projects as we currently know them.
Okay, and then I see, um, reconstruct runway.
Yes, that's a, that's a longer term.
Longer term, yes. I see that's $790,000, the city portion of a total cost of, of $7,900,000.
Yes, it's a very big project.
And that's slated for 2027 or later?
2027 or later.
Okay.
That one was large enough that we thought it would be a good idea to put it on the radar just so you knew that it was, it was out there.
Sure. Okay. Well, that continues to make our airport viable and, um, continue to bring more traffic into the airport so we can sell more fuel and of course it's a benefit to keep the airport up for Textron, for Cessna, so.
And our engineering firm has been, uh, very good about assisting us in maximizing the federal and, uh, state dollars that are available for our use. So I do one of those, Locker and Associates, they've been very good about helping us with that.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. And this isn't related to these projects, but, um, there was a question about, um, not deicing planes, but the, the runway itself.
Uh, we can give you an update on that, David, do you want to tell them what we're doing?
Uh, yes, uh, with the temperatures currently and my, help me with this, John, and when we get to five degrees, correct?
It sounded like that was about the, the temperature where the deicer ceased to be effective.
Yeah, and basically the runway has been shut down just because we couldn't break the ice this week. Uh, we did get a little just yesterday to where it did start working, but we brought a company down from Wichita with a special chemical, John, that was able to treat and hopefully pre-treat and was, opened up the runway and the compass pads for Cessna to begin back production.
Great.
So it has been a very difficult week with these unusual arctic blast and the temperatures we've been and, uh, visiting with Paula, you know, we anticipate this weekend with the next even colder arctic blast to create more issues next week and, uh, but we did have to, uh, it was considerable bound money to bring them down and get our runways open and, but hopefully the pre-treatment will help us next week too.
So Textron will be able to hopefully operate next week even.
Yes.
With the prospect of even colder temperatures moving in.
Yes, yes, we were able to get the runways back open and the compass pad and blast pad and all that is back in operation so that they could get back to testing their planes and back to flying today. They have several deliveries they'd like to do next week.
Okay, great, that's good to hear.
It's my understanding this has been a fairly unique event. Normally when it's this cold, it's not this wet and normally when it's this wet, it's, it's not this cold.
Yeah, and, and typical Kansas, we're cold, but two days later we're above freezing again and, uh, the chemicals we have will work, but when we hit this sub, I mean, we even see it here in town, they, I mean, at some point even the salt stops working. I mean, it's just so cold, so.
How does Tri-City and Coffeyville handle in weather like this? Do they have a, another company come in on treat there?
You know, I was visiting with Cogee and I believe, uh, all of them have been pretty much shut down.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, and it was with Cessna's help that we found this company in Wichita. Uh, they work on their Cessna runways and, uh, to find this company, bring this treatment down. And John is researching our abilities to maybe be able to provide this chemical in the future, but you know, it could be like our last snow event in 2011 of any significance, it could be five or six years before we have another event like this that.
I hope so.
And you know, Paula's, Cessna's been extremely well to work with, very understanding that this is a unique event that you, we don't face in Southeast Kansas very often.
This is one more to be prepared on who to call to help and actually purchase and have on store the chemicals or the equipment.
Yeah.
But it just, you know, the more people that you can pull in.
Yeah.
To a market, it helps.
It's, it's difficult because of FOB and Dean will know this more, I mean, we can only use rubber blades on the runway, we have to be very careful. What we do out there is we break the ice up because we don't want to create, I believe it's called FOB correctly.
FOD.
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 And you can't use gravel.
Yeah, so and there's only a specific kind of deicer we can use and so it makes it very cr, very difficult and it's going to be a learning experience, you know, but I'm sure John's up to it and Mike.
Absolutely.
Keep this going, you know?
Well, that's good, I'm glad this is going to work out to the satisfaction of, uh, Cessna and the city and it's, it's a good collaboration where they were able to help and we were able to.
Yeah.
Make contact with the vendor and do what we needed to do to keep the runway open, so, so thank you to everybody that participated in that to make sure that that happened.
With the reconstruction of runway 1735, is that a total removal of the runway and reconstruction or is it major maintenance?
I, I would have to check on that, I believe at this point that it would be major maintenance. I don't believe it's a completely reconstruction, but I, I can check on that.
Yeah, and would it shut the airport down or do we have two runways?
Again, I'll have to check with, check with Matt and see how those plans are because they're pretty early on in those.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Gentlemen, we've had a, have you had a chance to look at the city board minutes, the library board minutes, the PNC board minutes and the rec commission board minutes?
I have.
I have, no questions.
I have, I have no questions.
And I just want to say how much we appreciate those boards, providing those so that everyone knows what, what's going on and, and I hope that you find that as something valuable in your packets. You know, if not, you know, let us know, we can just post those on somewhere else, but, um, you know, any feedback, it's, I, I think it's good for transparency so that everyone knows what the city boards are doing.
Right.
Well, I'd like to thank all, all the, the boards that turn in these reports on a regular basis, it does help us understand as commissioners, uh, what you're actually, uh, doing and it gives us a chance to catch up as to where you're at. So I know paperwork sometimes is the last to, to be followed through, but we do appreciate it that you, that you all strive to get these reports into a timely manner, so, uh, they're available as to read, so, so thank you for taking the effort to do that, it's greatly appreciated.
And they're all volunteers that serve on these city boards and they're giving their own time and it's just very appreciated.
Well, thank you. All right, moving along, uh, item seven, city manager comments.
I'm going to have, uh, David just kind of do a preliminary, what we've been, uh, doing on trying to plan for this, um, potentially big storm event this weekend.
Uh, Commission, as, as you're aware, uh, we have two events coming in, the first being the arctic blast with tomorrow, uh, potentially wind chills, uh, minus 30 degrees. Uh, we, we've already started to see some freezing meters in the community and we just, uh, have implemented, uh, stopped meter reading, trying to keep the, uh, meter pits closed so that the cold air isn't getting in there and, uh, we encourage our citizens and we will be doing some social media posting, uh, you know, keep something dripping in your house, keep that water flowing, uh, so that a meter doesn't freeze. Uh, we want to do everything we can to stop that. Uh, so that, that's our, one of our first priorities, uh, is dealing with that. The other is concern of our employees, this Saturday, uh, we are going to suspend trash services, uh, depending on the conditions of the weather, we may have them in the trucks if possible, doing some of the business route, but they will not be on the back of the truck just due to the conditions of the weather. That is possibly could be suspended on Monday with what we anticipate with some very heavy snows and continuing of the arctic blast, uh, we may have to suspend, but we will get trash service back and going as quick as possible and at least get once, one pickup.
A week, so.
In next week. Uh, other issues that we're doing is just trying to prepare, you know, we're seeing numbers all over the place from two to 30 plus potential in, inches of snow that could be possible with this storm coming in Sunday. It's going to be a prolonged event, starting sometime Sunday, lasting into Tuesday or, or early Wednesday at this point. Uh, we brought all of our staff in and began planning today, uh, did an initial planning of equipment, making sure all our equipment is, uh, as you know with diesel, even with additives that these sub arctic temperatures, uh, can gel on you, so making sure we get the additives we needed, uh, working with Angela, Angela's been very busy at the park, um, getting shelter for the animal, moving the animals and to ensure that we have everything covered there. Uh, we're also trying to cover our bases for power outage in the community. Uh, we have Vic Gorman and the Methodist Church is already available with their shelter, uh, we will be available. the Methodist Church is already available with their shelter. We will be available with Memorial Hall if needed, if we should have a power outage or a gas issue in town where people lose power. Of course, we also have Building D, which is generator powered if we would need to utilize that. So all our crews are kind of in a preparation, fire EMS has done a lot of different work and staffing to make sure we can cover in these amounts of snow. We've worked with Labette Health, discussing all plans if we get a large snow event of how we're going to handle patient transports and stuff like that. So at this time, we're, we kind of have an emergency team together. We are meeting daily. We'll meet again at 8:30. We'll reevaluate the latest weather reports and continue to meet up until the event happens and throughout the event. Kelly will be working with Joanne to put a lot of different social media information out to our citizens so they're aware of what they, what to expect. Again, encouraging them to keep something dripping in their homes during these real cold temperatures and other safety information to help them. So we're hopefully prepared. Hopefully it passes us, but if it does come, I think we'll be ready to handle it. And is there any specific questions you guys might have or?
Well, would you suggest to the citizens themselves that they make some storm preparations in their homes?
Yes. This could, this very good point, and it is a point that we're going to make in social media. This is going to be a prolonged event, especially when you start thinking tomorrow, Saturday, especially these sub Arctic cold temperatures and in the snow. It's a long event, Sunday through potentially Wednesday. If we receive those 20, 30 inches of snow, they are not going to be able to get out. So you know, some pre-planning, being able to sustain yourself for three or four days at your home, having enough food and supplies during that time would be very wise of our citizens.
David, I know certain of our streets are considered to be critical routes for emergency vehicles and otherwise, but they're hard to clear if there are cars parked on the street. Would be, would there be an advantage to the city to restrict parking on certain streets in anticipation of having huge piles of snow to move out of the way?
Mike is here, but again, we do encourage citizens, you are exactly correct. Cars parked in the street does make it difficult for our snowplows to get up and down the streets. It is very critical.